All right, we are live, I guess, so I guess we'll start on me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of bills to pay and we have a couple of applications, but the applications are kind of confusing. I didn't understand the one for, I'll start with the first one, I'll bring it up. For lot thirteen A and Green Acres, what is in the state law? I couldn't find that anywhere in the bylaws.
There is no designation for that.
Okay.
Maybe, it may be in the new one that we haven't held in the hearing for next week, I haven't gone through that one completely yet.
Okay.
I don't think it exists because if you look at the bottom of what is written, it says it was approved by the town but not by the state, so I don't think it was ever adopted.
Right, there's a technicality or something with the state, it said.
Right, but if it wasn't approved, it wouldn't get put into our bylaws.
Right. Okay, I'll bring it up anyway and I'll just read it off. Did that come up for everyone to see?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, I don't know why that's not coming up. I don't know, it's on my screen, it's on everyone else's. Give me a second, let me see if I can figure it out. No, it's not sharing anything. It come up that time?
I think it's coming out.
Yep.
All right. I'm still learning. All right, I'll just read it over. Lot thirteen A, Green Acres Drive, Whitman. Type of district, A1. Type of structure proposed, owner's name Anthony Federico, Lakeview, California, co-owner Stephen Egan, Pastor Lane Whitman. When did you acquire the property, seven nineteen seventy-five? As an application was filed with the clerk, yes, previous appeal been made, no. Section of bylaws relief, section six six five. And asking for relief of frontage variance to create a state law. Property was purchased in nineteen seventy-five since the town has on a sewer easement in drainage trench to the property working. No, I can't read those, it says. Making, oh, making it impossible to extend the road to allow frontage. The lot does not meet requirements of a state law bylaw that the town posted, but the state turned down on technicality. So, I don't even know where to go with that.
Well, they're looking for a variance because they don't have enough frontage the way they've designed the home.
Right. But I don't even see a house or anything that they want to put on there or anything on the lot up here.
The house is in the middle, says proposed.
Oh, so that's not a separate lot they're trying to make?
No, that's all one lot.
Okay.
And it's about an acre and three quarters roughly, seventy-five thousand square feet, seventy-five oh eight. Let's see the dwelling there in the middle.
I see it now, proposed dwelling, it was hard to read on the paper.
You can't read the site plan that we had at all.
But the sewer easement, just, I went down there today. There's also a little river that runs through the front of that property, sort of at where the entrance is, where the sewer easement is, it actually goes over, there's a road built over it on Kerry Lane, which is next door.
Okay.
But I don't understand why they're asking for a variance to reduce the frontage when they've got so much property, in my mind, they could just push the house back so they get the proper frontage.
How long, how wide is the frontage joint?
The frontage that they're proposing, I think, is.
The right here is it twenty-five feet?
Twenty-five.
They want only twenty-five feet?
They want, they want, they're allowing twenty-five, although I don't think it is twenty-five, I think it's.
It's a hundred and fifty feet in the A1 zone. You're talking about the setback or the width of the lot?
They're talking about the frontage.
The frontage from here to the road of thirty-five feet is what they're supposed to have.
Right.
Right.
They only have twenty-five feet.
But they're also, they're also making the point, which is a valid point, that they lost the frontage they would have had because of the sewer easement.
Right.
Well, that, that's, I don't know if that's a valid argument.
Well, I know, I don't think it's a valid argument to give them a variance, but it's a value argument that they did lose that frontage because from what I understand, the town goes in there monthly to drain the sewer storage area. It's very wet in the front, I didn't walk it, but I could see that it was wet and we haven't had that much rain. And I could see the little brook. I just don't know why they don't push the house back a little bit, then they wouldn't have an issue.
Right.
But there's probably a reason.
It may be too wet back there further to build.
Right.
That looks like it might be the building envelope, that big black line that goes around it.
Right here?
Yeah.
There's a proposed fence that goes around it.
Line right here, I would say that property goes back to here.
Yeah, that may be the only buildable area because if they, they can only fill in up to five thousand feet on a lot. And then if they do that, they've got to be able to give it back from someplace else on the same lot.
Right. So they want to extend the road and everything, this is coming off the circle.
Yeah.
All of this here and everything back.
How far, I mean, how much do they have for frontage on the lot, they're supposed to have a hundred and fifty feet.
I think they, I can't really read the.
It's very difficult to read.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't tell if it says eighty-five or thirty-five.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
Thirty-five is how much they need from the street to the, to the building.
Right, and this is the frontage line you're talking about from the corner to corner, right?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
But I'm talking about at the front of the lot where the lot meets the street, what is it?
It's not very wide. It's, it's, I was surprised when I went into the cul-de-sac. The house that's, you can see it on this, I wish I could point. Adam, if you can come over to the, like, the entrance of the cul-de-sac.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come over to this property that's to the bottom.
Right here.
Yeah, see how that land goes all the way up, go up to the corner of that land towards the new house?
Right here.
Yeah, that, and then lower it a little so we can see the entrance. It's, most, most homes in a cul-de-sac, that would have ended sort of at the end of the cul-de-sac, but it goes way in, so that narrows, if you bring this down a little.
There's a fence line here.
Yeah, if you bring the whole thing down a little so we can see the cul-de-sac again, that little space.
Wrong way, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Buzzed zoomed in on.
That, that entrance there is not very wide and there's, there's no road there, it's all woods. But it's the, it's the breakaway from the two properties that abut it.
So where that circle ends is where, is where their frontage ends, is where their frontage begins.
Correct.
And it's only as wide as that, that driveway, whatever you want to call it, and that's not, that's only what, forty-one?
Forty-one point one five, so almost forty-one and a half feet basically, forty-one feet.
So they, it shot a hundred and nine feet.
So by moving it back where they've moved it.
That, that doesn't give them any more frontage on the, on the cul-de-sac, moving it back. They've only got forty-one and a half feet on the cul-de-sac because the other side of that is the property owners on either side.
Right, I get it.
This is their easement basically to that lot is right here.
Right.
That is the entry again.
I know both of those abutters on each side are very upset and concerned about how much they're going to disturb the wetlands down there.
Okay.
Yeah, and I met a lady who lives two houses in, she saw me and, and she was like, you know, making faces like, what are you doing here, so I explained who I was and she was concerned. But if they hadn't, Wayne, if they hadn't taken the storage easement area, what would cha, what have, would have changed as it relates to the frontage, nothing really.
Nothing, because the abutters on either side on the property right up to that, so there's only.
I see.
Yeah.
So the store part is kind of irrelevant.
That's right, even if they didn't put the easement in there, they'd still only have forty-one and a half feet.
I see.
The easement right here is only thirty feet, so you got to figure this, what, maybe say seven feet on either side of the easement, give or take.
Well, on, on.
Through here with their easement.
But on an easement, I don't know if it's the same as a paper street or not. On a paper street, you can use up to fifty percent of the easement, I mean of the paper street on your side.
Okay.
I don't know if it's that way with an easement or not, but you know, that's, I don't know, that, that seems like it. I understand that's all they've got is forty-one feet, but it's, I don't know, that's, that's an awful big deficiency from a hundred and fifty feet. I'm surprised Steve Egan isn't on, on with us tonight to explain it.
Right.
Because usually he and Richie try to get to the planning, the planning board now, don't they, they used to.
When we were in person, they were, and Steve has come on a couple of times, and so has Richie, looking for lot releases. But so much to explain any of their plans during the COVID situation.
Yeah, well, I know, before COVID, they used to come on to explain it because the board was always denying them.
Right.
You know, then they go to the Board of Appeals and they explain it, and the Board of Appeals can't understand why the planning board denied it, but the planning board never got the same information.
Right.
So I'm hoping once this opens up again, the developers come back and explain it.
Bless you.
Wayne, can I ask you a question that may not be relevant, but so I took a ride onto Kerry Lane, which is the street beside this. Because it's listed as Green Acres Drive, would there be any possibility of entering from Kerry Lane? Because that looked, that was like away from the wet area. It was beyond the storage, you know, that's, that bit of land there. I just don't know if it's a right of way because it's not on the same street.
Well, I don't even know where Kerry Lane is, oh, I see.
Right here on the bottom of the string, I'm trying to zoom in on it, there it is, it comes down the bottom of their lot.
Where, where does Kerry Lane begin, out on Plumb Street?
Yes.
All right, I wasn't aware of that, well, if, if they have frontage on Kerry Lane, I, you know, I don't see why they couldn't go in, because you, you got to have frontage on a lot in order to build.
Off of Kerry, they have a hundred and ninety-five feet almost.
Yeah.
But it may be to Wayne's point that that area may be wet, and I didn't tell.
Because you've got, you've got to have frontage on a, on a way in order to build on.
Yeah, because the back of the property abuts houses that go around the corner on Kerry Lane continues around to the back. I went all the way around it as much as I could without being in the wet.
Right.
Well, I, I wasn't aware that Kerry Lane existed because my zoning map is back from nineteen seventy-three.
Well, isn't that our fault?
Well, right here on Kerry Lane, it looks like there's a gap right here that says it's owned by Bakwa Realty Trust with two twenty-four inch culverts going in here, probably drained from the wetlands.
Right, and that's him, that's the owner.
Okay.
The reason you can't find Kerry Lane, Wayne, is it's actually off of another street off of Plymouth Street, and I can't.
I had a discussion with Dawn Varley last night before the zoning board meeting, and she says it's not her, it's not up to her to print zoning maps or stuff like that, it's up to the planning board to have it done.
Yeah.
I always thought it was the town clerk's job, but it's not.
Well, that street that Kerry Lane runs off of is right next to where the old Clayton's was.
Okay.
And I can't tell you, I know Edward Drive is down there and then I don't know what the main one I came in on was.
Well, if, if they have frontage on Kerry, Kerry Lane and it's, and it's not wet, then they could go in from that direction, I would assume. But, you know, I haven't been down there, so I can't speak.
Yeah, and I couldn't really tell. I just thought they could go back further into the property, but if it's all wetlands, it's, you know, I can see why it would create more problems for the people around them.
Yeah, this here looks like a drainage ditch here that goes into that culvert right here for drainage right in through here, so they probably can't go back too much further.
This, this, this copy of the site plan you get on, on tonight is a lot clearer than the one that I had that I, that I got sent, I couldn't read any of the writing on it even with a magnifying glass.
Yeah, Melissa took this and blew it all up nicely for us, this one helps out a lot. This is pretty much the one that she sent us all, I just was able to zoom in on it a little bit more with the, with what we have tonight, and it's still hard to read everything.
Well, it'll be good when we go back to the regular hearings in the town hall, because then we'll have the full-size site plan.
That's what Melissa was working for, trying to take pictures for us, so we could at least see something tonight. And it's so hard with the little writing, even no matter what kind of camera you have. You know, most of it, it's a lot easier to read than the little printout I have on one page, on eight by ten page, so this is much better.
It's a lot better.
You know, but it's still, it's still vague, I say, anyway, you know, it's.
I would, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I feel that I don't think I've got enough information to, to make a recommendation one way or the other one is.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. And that's what's going to happen, like you said, is the zoning board of appeals is going to have more information than we do.
Yeah, but when this comes up on the zoning board, we're going to be open session the next time.
Right.
Up in the town hall, we're opening up the twenty-sixth, we've got the next cases, we got Richie Rosen's case that night too.
Well, that might get changed because we've gone back into the red.
Yeah, well, they'll, if they do that, they're going to have to reschedule everything because you got to, we'd have to re-advertise it again.
Right.
So they wouldn't be able to have the hearings till the end of May then, instead of the end of April. I think some people would be very upset if, if they do that. I think they ought to let, at the very least, they ought to let the ones that are scheduled now go through with it.
Yeah.
I will tell.
Well, they'll decide tonight, anyway. They're going to discuss all that tonight.
Yeah, for mom's sake, Melissa, when Barry told us she was going to find out, you talked to, you put a call in to Lincoln, Melissa, right, to find out about that when we could go back?
Yeah, yeah.
But he hasn't got back to her yet, so. But we'll see, time will tell. So, does anybody want to make a motion or?
Well, I would make a motion that we can't make a recommendation because of lack of information.
All right, so motion would be, how we wording it, no motion?
Unless, unless somebody else had some better way of, you know.
Yeah, I would say we recommend no, no recommendation due to lack of information, is how I would state it.
Yep, sounds good to me, because that's the truth.
Yeah. You know, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of Lane?
In favor.
Alani?
In favor.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I am also in favor, it's unanimous, Melissa? All right, now forgive me if I lose you for a minute, but I'm going to try to get out of this for a second and see if I can get to the next one. Let's see what this button does. No, that didn't do it. Trying to figure out how to get you guys bigger again. Because I can't even get sheer screen up here right now. Just be with me for one minute. That didn't work either. I don't know, let's see what happens if I do this.
There you go.
I'm just getting buttons and hoping they work.
Anybody look familiar on there?
Everyone looks familiar. All right, let me just find the next one here and I'll bring up that one. Got it here a second ago. Was going to bring it up on this. I lost my email, so give me one second to get the email back up. All right, I got it. I'm used to like Windows ninety-nine, I'm not used to this one on my phone. I got to open it up first, yeah, so. All right, sixty Warren Ave. All right, does that come up?
Yes.
All right, I'm getting there. I can't wait for this to be done. All right, sixty Warren Ave, general residence, I don't know what that says, GR?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, type of structure existing. Anja Powell Smith, two oh four Rockland Street, Abington. Acquired property June twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, application's been filed with the clerk, yes. No previous appeal has been made. Variance five, section five, five dash four, A twelve, and site plan approval. Seeking to convert a legal two-family dwelling into a legal three-family dwelling. And right off the bat, we don't even know how many bedrooms there are, right, that I noticed anyway.
I can tell you there's six from looking on it online.
All right. No, that's all they gave us, is that right there, so. I can bring that up best I can. You know, I don't know how, what the house looks like, looks like they just want to put a third-story addition on top.
They have a third, they have an attic, they'll probably just convert that.
I'll put dormers on it or something, one or the other.
But yes, they could do that.
It's a pretty big, big building.
Okay.
It's actually two numbers of the street, it's sixty and sixty-two, I believe.
Yep.
And the other thing, for a multi-family dwelling, that's supposed to be eighty-seven thousand square feet. And this says seventy-two hundred. So obviously it was grandfathered because it's older.
Right.
But converting it to a three-family, it's, appears to me to be a non-conforming, becoming more nor, more non-conforming.
That's exactly what I was going to say, same.
Eric's famous words.
Thank you, Bonnie.
My, my biggest problem with it is there's only parking for four vehicles in the driveway.
Right.
And I didn't look it up, but I'm pretty sure you have to have, what, one parking space for.
Each bedroom.
They did nine parking spots for six bedrooms, right?
They have six bedrooms in the house?
There will be, correct the line.
I don't know if there will be, there currently is according to the real estate, you know, I Googled it.
Right.
And it said six bedrooms, and there's actually pictures of, of the apartments, kitchens, living rooms, bedrooms.
Usually on the third floor, they only have one or two bedrooms.
Right.
They have three unless they build it out completely.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think they've built out the third floor, I think this is just the two, it's, it's got, it's got three entrances that face the street. Two in the front and then one on the side, but they're all facing the street. The one on the side is where the driveway is.
Right, they've, they've got to have more parking and, and there's no place for them to put any more parking.
If it was a three-family, do they need a dumpster and snow removal places like that, that are usually on the plan?
No.
No, okay.
It's just that any structure in the town of Whitman, other than a one or a two-family, has to have site plan approval.
Okay.
That's why, that's why they need site plan approval.
So that doesn't really mean anything, like, you know, like Alani said, it's a non-conforming lot becoming more non-conforming.
Elaine said that.
Elaine, I'm sorry. Someone voices what, when I don't have it lit up, you know, I only have little pictures of everybody, so I can't tell who's talking all the time.
That's okay, Lonnie and I agreed to that.
So.
But again, without knowing, I mean, if they were gonna take, the other thing I thought of in fairness to them, if they were going to take one of the existing units. And somehow divide that to be the third. They'd still have the parking issue, because it would be different people with more cars.
It's based on the number of bedrooms, yeah.
Right, but if they took like, if one of those units was able to be. Converted somehow that two bedrooms were in one and one bedroom was in another. Because one of the, one of the pictures showed a laundry, well washer and dryer. In a huge room. So I envisioned that maybe that could be converted to a bathroom and laundry. For the third unit, I mean, I'm stretching, I have no idea. Right.
There's a vague site plan.
Right, it doesn't look like a building that you could do much more to it structurally, because it's right. Butted up to its neighbors on the sides.
Yeah.
And I couldn't really see the back, but I don't think there's much footage back there either.
Yeah. A hundred and twenty-six feet from the back of the stairs, I can't tell what's on the, the right-hand side, the left side's only seventeen feet. From the neighbors prop, from their property line. I say the other side's maybe, oh, it says right there at the arrow, four and a half feet. From the side of their house to the neighbor's property, it's got that little arrow, and it's written on the other side right here.
They're very close.
Yeah, so right down here is only four and a half feet from their own property line.
A lot of times when they convert a third floor, they either have just one or two bedrooms, very rare they ever try to put three bedrooms.
Right, might even be a studio, who knows, they don't tell us anything.
The only way they'd be able to do that is if they put full, full shed dormers on the top like they did. On the place next to Turgeon's there on the, on the corner of eighteen and, and the twenty-seven.
Oh yeah, I know what you mean.
They came before us, I believe, about a year ago.
It did.
Year and a half ago. My question right to him is if he was gonna, if it was gonna be dormers of full structure, and he said dormers.
Yeah, they had to put a full dormer on it, and they were only gonna have one stairway.
Yeah.
To begin with, they didn't want a second stairway, and you know, zoning board told them, no, no second stairway, no, no.
Right.
Well, the fire department wouldn't approve it either.
Yeah. And they just overloading.
From each unit.
Yep. Yeah, it looks like, well, it looks like the, the deck two is proposed, so it looks like we're gonna add a third floor to this back deck two. If all the lines are right, so the back entrance right here, the main, the, I'm stumbled, I'm sorry. You know, the, the, the entrance on the back to the third, third floor deck.
So now that I can see this better, what does it say in the middle of the building? Proposed.
Proposed third-story addition.
Oh, so they are talking about putting on a third story.
Right, yep, so they wanna make us a straight three-story, three-family.
Yep, they may wanna make it the full, full. You know, with the dormers, because they, they wouldn't have enough ceiling height if they didn't put dormers on it, and they got.
Because you can see the attic from the road, it's just.
But that, that, that's why the, the, the planning board had a disadvantage, because we don't get an explanation. Like the zoning board, they come before you, and you can question them and bring out all the information.
Yeah, it would be nice if we got a floor plan and a, you know, a facade of what the outside would look like when it's done.
Well, it's up to the planning board to, to make a, get a new bylaw going to, to require anything submitted to them.
Right, what is the requirement now, just the site plan, this is all that's required right now?
Well, it's only required if it's, if it's something other than a one or a two-family home.
Okay.
One and two-family homes, you know, residents, you don't have to have site plans.
Yeah, we, we can't, you know, I don't know, it's just so hard to figure out what they're doing, there's no one to ask questions to or anything.
Well, the only reason the planning board gets a copy is because all the major boards in town, by law, have to get a copy.
Yep.
And then they have thirty days to submit their recommendation to the zoning board, that's why it takes at least thirty days to hold the, the hearing on the zoning board.
Yeah. Somebody like to make a recommendation or a motion?
I like the one that we, Elena and I had said at first about it being. Still a non-conforming. And it would continue the non-conforming.
Recommend denial, do a non-conforming lot becoming more non-conforming.
Well, the, the other thing to consider, because I've watched enough appeals boards meetings.
Okay.
Is, maybe we could deny it without. What's the word, Wayne, without judgment?
You could, you could ask them to withdraw.
Yeah, and to come back and explain to us what they're doing, because we may approve it if we could understand it better.
Well, that's it, but the thing is, if the zoning board denies it, they can't come back from two years. Unless they go to the planning board, and the planning board decides that there is a substantial change. And they have to approve it by all but one of the members of the board, before they can come back, before the zoning board within the two years. We just did that with the property on the corner of Green Acres, and. We asked, we had suggested to the fellow that he. Withdraw, we allow them to withdraw without prejudice and come back with some new site plans.
So would that be something we could say? The, you know, the recommend, recommend withdraw without prejudice and give us more information, or come before us with more information?
I, I don't know if that's ever been suggested by the planning board or not.
First time.
Oh, leave it, leave it to me to say it then.
Yeah. You know.
Well, don't forget, you would, in order to do that, you would have to have some kind of correspondence with the applicant. Otherwise, they wouldn't know about it.
Right.
Well, we could send them a letter.
This, this board has the right to deny, you know, to recommend denial. All you're doing is making recommendations, you don't have, I don't know if you have the power to do that.
Well, then, I guess I would withdraw my comment and say, let's deny it because we don't have enough information again.
We, we could recommend denial, but I don't think, I don't think we can actually deny it, because they're not coming for our approval.
No, 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 recommend denial due to lack of information, like we just did on the other one. Because in fairness.
And, well, you could also, I think you could also say, because it would be making a, a non-conforming use. A greater non-conforming use.
Which is what I originally said.
Yeah.
Well, you could incorporate that in, but I, I don't know if the planning board can actually deny something, because they're not being asked to. To vote on something, they're being asked to give their recommendation, just like.
Right, I, I'm not looking to deny it, I'm just looking to make a recommendation to the appeals board.
Because it's just like the fire department and the Concom and all, they give recommendation.
Yeah.
EPW only does, gives a recommendation about once a year.
Because that's all our purpose is, is just to make a recommendation to the zoning board, correct?
Right.
Right.
And I'm not proposing that we do anything different.
As long as you word it right, you know, you can, you can, you know.
Right.
It, it, it would be making a non-conforming use, more non-conforming.
Let's go with that.
Denial due to lack of information and making a non-conforming lot more non-conforming.
Right.
Does that sound good?
That sounds good.
But then they could come back with this, well, the house was built before zoning, and it, so, you know. Anything that, that was existed prior to zoning is grandfathered.
But that's up to the zoning board.
Yep.
So. All right, so our recommendation is denial due to lack of information in making a non-conforming lot more non-conforming.
Now, I would just do the lack of information.
Lack of, will I just leave it with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so who would like to make the recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation.
Okay, Elaine's recommendation of denial due to lack of information.
Yep.
All right, do we have a second?
We'll second.
Second by Wayne, all in favor, Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Wayne?
Favor.
I am in favor also, all right, we good Melissa? All right. All right, so let me get rid of this one now, and hopefully I don't lose everybody. There we go, all right, I think that's it for that, but I do have a couple of bills.
I'm not paying any bills tonight.
No, okay, that's cool then, because one of them, I don't think we can pay anyway, because it's way outside our budget according to Melissa and Mary. The first one we have, I don't, I can't bring these up, so I don't have them, I didn't have time to scan them. Um, this is for the, um, running into Whitman Hansen Express. Town legal ad column thirty-three, one by thirty-three, we have a nine-hundred legal notice. Planning board bylaw changes, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Woo.
Yeah, so I talked to Melissa about when she gave it to me, we have to, we're gonna talk to, what did you say, who's gonna take care of this?
I was talking, I was talking with Frank about it, so I'll follow up with him tomorrow.
Okay, so that one's taken care of.
Is Frank Alani still active in this?
Yeah, he is, he's, um, still helping out.
How, how long is he gonna be advising him?
Not sure.
All right. Uh, the final one I have is from Ross Engineering. Site inspection for Mary Anne Estates, four forty-two Temple Street. Senior project engineer, construction site inspection on October twentieth, twenty twenty, and December first, twenty twenty. Two hours, hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Plus administrative fees, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Oh, this is my first bill as chairman, so I have no idea what we're doing. How I did this.
Melissa, is there money in the account to pay that?
Um, I'm not sure of the exact balance offhand right now, I believe there is enough to cover that.
Okay.
Um, but I can look into that, because I didn't know the amount of it before right now, but I can look into it and find out.
We just got, I just got it today, I believe, so before the last meeting, and I didn't have a chance to open it, so.
Those are the condos across from McLaughlin Chevrolet.
Oh, okay.
Those are ones.
I think it's still, no, it's across from Arthur.
Right.
Four forty-two Temple.
Four forty-two, where is that?
Across from Arthur Street.
Oh, across from Arthur Street, oh, okay, I didn't say the name didn't sound familiar.
And I would assume that if there isn't enough money in that particular. Account for that developer, then we would have to send a letter to put more money in it.
Right, correct, I remember, yeah, I remember, I'm starting to remember that now. This seriously, this is the first bill we've had for one of these since Eric and Sheila stepped, so.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Actually a hundred percent sure of how to word it or anything. So, would you like to make a motion to pay the bill pending funds?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second by Elaine. All in favor Wayne?
Yeah.
Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
And I am in favor. So, yeah, Melissa, if there's, there is enough money, we'll send a letter, who's the developer on it, it doesn't even say. Because, because it wouldn't be Ross Engineering, it would be the, whoever developed, the developer would have to put the funds in, correct?
Right.
As far as I remember, it's John Nosfero.
I think you're right.
I think that's correct, um, I can pull it all up tomorrow, and I will follow up with an email that to everyone towards them now.
Okay, excellent, yes, it doesn't say anywhere on here who's, who it is or anything, so. All right.
Can I make a comment about our zoning board meeting?
Sure.
I've had a chance to go through all of the. Changes, and I agree immensely with Wayne about the section for the use of zones. Being quite unclear compared to this, the chat that we had before. But I don't know, during this hearing, do we get to make recommendations regarding it?
I don't think we can make, I don't think they want us to make any changes, they just want us to hold a public hearing.
Right.
Though anybody can voice their opinions on it, but I don't, with, with this is, with this is zoning, and I think it's already been approved.
Has it?
I don't know.
They think that they, in the verbiage that I got from the town council, I think that you are, that the planning board is able to make a recommendation. After the public hearing, I'll double check and I'll send it over to you.
And I'm not looking to, I'm not looking to change the wording, just to be clear. I'm just looking to set the format, so it's more user-friendly. The rest of it looks pretty good. Much easier to follow, I'm actually using it instead of the old copy.
Right. Yeah. I haven't got all the way through it yet, but I'm getting there.
Well, being retired, I have more time.
Where did you get that idea, Elaine? I don't know of any other retired person that says they've got plenty of time.
Well, it's because we're in a pandemic, I can't do all the other things I like to do.
Everybody says they're busier now than when they worked for a living, and I never believed them, and now.
I felt, I felt that way before we went into the pandemic, I was retired for a short period of time, and I was quite busy. But the pandemic locked me down, so.
I'm on six fourteen-hour days right now, so my time is sleeping and working, I've been reading through it on downtime to my truck. Try not to fall asleep and crash.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, um, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes that. Melissa put together for a, for a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, they were quite. Quite good, but I had a question, did we not do anything else after that meeting that we would have had minutes from? We met after that meeting.
Yes.
Didn't I, did I attach two sets of, um.
Oh, maybe you did, I only saw one.
Well, that's all.
I, maybe I. Thought I attached two, sorry about that.
I think you only did one, but I could be wrong.
We could, we could approve them next time.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
It's all in one, I, sorry, I attached this one. PDF, the first page of it was the joint meeting, and then if you keep scrolling down, it's the, our planning board meeting after that.
Okay. So the first section, I think, is fine, did anybody read the second section?
I'm zooming through it now.
Usually I print it, but I didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
But you know, I, I used to, every time I got, I, every time I got a case for the zoning board. I used to print up everything they sent. Well, this case that were continued a couple of times on Washington Terrace, where they wanna put the in-law apartment. The planning board voted to approve it, as long as, because they thought everything was gonna be great. And I have to say, the planning board made a bad vote on that. But anyway, I went to print it up, and altogether, there was gonna be nineteen pages, because I had all fifteen people send in letters of recommendation. Print it up, but that, no matter how you look at that, it's violating two sections of the bylaw. It's violating one section, that you can only have one principal building on a lot, and then it's violating the, uh. The in-law, uh, bylaw, because it's supposed to be substantially enclosed within the existing building. And it's not, it's just connecting up by the back door, a little area. So.
How many have we built in Whitman that are looking just like it, I can name a couple.
And I, and I, I vote against every one, but I'm in the majority, and, you know, the thing is. If, if the, my opinion is that the zoning board wants to, wants to enforce the zoning bylaw, they should. If they're not gonna enforce it, then they should. If they're not gonna enforce it, then they should have that removed from the bylaw.
Right.
Yep, I agree.
But anyway.
I can safely say my mother loves her in law.
And I think it's, I think it's safe to say it's the first time we ever approved something that the appeals board didn't, in my tenure anyways.
Well, we haven't voted on it yet.
I know.
So we ain't wrong yet then?
The applicant didn't show up for the continuation hea- hearing last night.
Jeez.
Yeah, something probably happened. Um. There's, there's a house on. Pine Haven Drive that. They put an addition and I believe it's bigger than the house.
Yeah. Yep, that's happened on Mayflower Circle and up on, uh, up off of Winter Street, there was one too. Holly Ridge Drive. The night of the hearings, the, the additions had already, the foundations had already been put in ahead of time and they were on either side, two of them on either side of the original building.
Wow. Well, it is good to be consistent, but I was surprised at that one.
Even the one that we did on five fifty-eight Plymouth last time, where they were like quadrupling the size of the house.
Yeah, the appeals, that's the one the appeals board sent away with no prejudice.
Yeah.
And, and that, that one involves the piece of land that he thought he could get from the town, buy from the town. But that would have to go to, um. Public.
That would have to go to town meeting. Only, only town meeting can, can agree to sell that.
Yeah.
By the way, uh, Elaine, we still have a, a vacancy for an alternate zoning board member if you want to apply for that. Well, you, you go to a lot of the meetings, you ought to become an alternate. I'm on both boards. Freddie, Freddie Gilmedy used to be on both boards.
Yeah, maybe when I know, maybe when I know more.
You don't, what do you need? You know, you know plenty now. You don't have enough to keep you busy now.
You'll be driving around, you'll, you'll be asking for mileage soon.
On Friday, I meet my, uh. Vaccine, um, and so I'll have a little bit more freedom. But once we're past this pandemic, I'll be plenty busy. But I, I would consider the appeals board because I find it very interesting. I just, right now, don't feel that I want to do that. Yeah.
Yeah, but most people, when they get on the zoning board, don't know anything about it. I didn't. It's something you have to learn. And you can't, even after all these years, I'm still learning stuff that I didn't know about.
Sure.
Most people can never learn. And the state's always changing the zoning bylaws. Anyway, we never did vote on the minutes.
Well, we have two sets of minutes. Should we combine them or should we do?
Sure.
Well, I, I can't vote on the ones of the minutes of this, of the joint meeting with the selectmen.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, let's do them separate then. I make a motion, make up the minutes of the meeting with the selectmen because I read that one.
Okay. I'll second that. I guess I can second something. All in favor, Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
I'm in favor. And that takes care of the selectmen meeting. And a motion to approve the minutes for the planning board meeting.
A motion.
Okay, motion by Alani, second?
Second.
Second by Wayne. All in favor, Elaine?
In favor.
Alani?
In favor.
Wayne?
Favor.
I am in favor. And we are good to go. That leaves Alani's favorite motion, unless anybody else has anything else to add?
Next, the, next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday.
It's at seven, right?
Yes. Yep. And there is a conservation meeting at seven fifty afterwards. So if someone would like to join onto that one. So.
Do we know what that's about? What?
It's about hydrants and drainage. I can read it off if you want real quick.
Sure.
Uh, the Whitman Conservation Commission will hold a public hearing online at seven fifty PM on Tuesday evening, April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Via video conference and maybe accessed through the town website. Are using the link here that I'm not gonna read. This public hearing is for a notice of intent filed by Larry Crowley, City of Brockton Public Works. Replacement of existing crossover piping valves, main gate valves and as well as installation of hydrants. The proposed project is in the southwest region of Whitman. All proposed work will be in the existing city-owned easement. However, work will result in temporary alteration of the watering vegetated wetlands in the two-hundred-foot riverfront area of the tributary to Meadowbrook. Which extends into the work area. Please note that this hearing is being held remotely and according to Governor Baker's acts, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and members of the public will not be able to physically attend.
Oh, so we can't attend.
No, we can attend virtually. Just, he can't, he just says, he can't, no one can go and walk in the door.
So you can go on Zoom for it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And the listing is here. If anyone wants it, let me know. I can send you a copy of the link if you want.
Yeah, why don't you send it to us? I'd like to see it anyway.
Okay, I can, I'll, I'll scan it out. I'll send it out in the morning if that's okay with everyone.
That'd be great.
All right. We'll take care of that. That takes care of our meeting for tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Alani, second?
I'll second it.
Second by Elaine. All in favor? Wayne?
Yes.
Alani?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
I am in favor. Thank you, everybody. I'll see you next week.
Take care.
Ryan, we're all set, sir.